This is Baltimore City Council Budget and Appropriations Committee. We are here for Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 three R, Quarterly Budget Briefing. Councilman Eric Hostela from the eleventh district, Chair of the Committee, joined at my left by Councilwoman Shannon Sneed, thirteenth district member of the Committee, to my right, Councilwoman Dani McCray, second district, Member of the Committee, and Council Vice President Sharon Green Milton, from the sixth district, Member of the Committee. It is great to be surrounded by women for this hearing today. Excellent. And we have Marguerite Curran, who is staffed to the Committee, Nina Themelis, representing Mayor Jack Young, Rebecca Bishop, Council to the Council. Bob, take it away.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Seneme, Budget Director, and today here to present the first quarter projections for fiscal twenty. So first, before we jump into it, just a reminder, this is, the first quarter projection is based off of data through the end of September. So we typically do our projections in October. If we have any other important information that we learn in either late October or November, we add it. But this is based on data through the end of September, the first quarter, and projecting through the end of the fiscal year. So first, you have the slides in front of you, and up on the screen you'll see, so our overall, so the summary for the general fund overall is a four point six million dollar, we're projecting a four point six million dollar surplus in the general fund. That's made up of a six point seven million dollar surplus on our revenues, and it's made up of a small deficit, two point one million dollars in expenditures. And we'll go into, again, some more detail as we usually do on both revenues and expenditures. You can see budget adjustments at this point are zero because we haven't had any supplementals or adjustments to the budget at this early stage of the year yet, so.
We've been joined by Councilman Leon Pinkett, seventh district, Vice Chair of the Committee.
So in terms of our, in terms of our revenues, as we usually do, we'll go right to left. We'll talk the items, the big items that are in surplus, and then going through some items that are in deficit, so.
And Bob, these are, these are first quarter projections for the entire year.
Yeah, this is a projection of where we'll end up by the end of the year, but it's based on data through the first three months. So for income tax, we're projecting a fifteen point three million dollar surplus in income tax. And as we talked at the closeout hearing, we have gotten, looks like, good news from the state. The state has now finished analyzing the calendar year eighteen tax returns, and there is a net help to local jurisdictions and to the state for income tax overall. That is because of the federal tax reform that was done, it's about two, two and a half years ago now, and now people have filed their calendar year two thousand and eighteen returns. They've analyzed it, and they've showed that local jurisdictions and the state are going to get more revenue. So we believe we can count on that. That was a, we saw that at the end of fiscal nineteen, that we had some of that revenue, and we're seeing the same thing happen in fiscal twenty. We did not budget for that in fiscal twenty because we did not have that information yet when we passed the budget. We also, we just did get our November distribution for income tax, and that also looks strong. So generally, what the state does is they get cash withholdings from, from all employers, and those numbers look strong for November. So we, if anything, we anticipate this could get even a little bit stronger as we go on throughout the fiscal year. The second item, the local health operations grant, the two point four million dollars, that was just a timing issue. That was something that we did not receive in fiscal nineteen because of the ransomware. We were not able to put the data together to get the, that we needed to give to the state to get that money. So that came in, in fiscal twenty. So again, that's just a timing issue. On hotel tax, we're projecting a one point two million dollar surplus. What we generally look at for hotel tax is we look at the occupancy rate, so, and we also look at the average daily rate that's being charged. And what we're seeing so far for fiscal twenty is the occupancy rate is up about one and a half percent. That's pretty modest, but that means more people are staying in our hotels. The actual daily rate, or the average rate that hotels are charging, is about the same. So we're seeing a little bit of an improvement versus last year, at least so far through the first quarter.
Bob, what are we gonna see in additional revenue from the short-term rental, the short-term rental bill?
So for the Airbnb?
Yeah.
Are we receiving for that?
Yeah.
Because it started in January, I'm just.
We are receiving money from Airbnb.
And that's in hotel tax?
Starting January is the registration process.
Right, no, but I know we started collecting the tax last January. I'm just, my question is, because we got a half a year of it for fiscal nineteen, right?
Probably like four months, yeah.
How much are we gonna get in total for twenty?
I can give you the data, I don't have it handy.
Okay.
Breakdown specifically for Airbnb.
Thanks.
It was built into the twenty budget.
Yeah, definitely.
So the next item on energy taxes, budget is forty-two, forty-two point nine million dollars for all sources, for gas and electricity mostly, we have a small surplus. We're projecting of about nine hundred thousand dollars. Reason for that is we did have higher, we know for sure we had higher electricity consumption in the summer because it was a hot season. We're projecting for the rest of the year just historical averages, since we don't know what the temps will look like, temperatures in, in the winter. On municipal advert, so moving, again, right to left, going into items where we are in debt or projecting a deficit, the first one is municipal advertising. So we have a budget of one million dollars. We don't think that we'll get anything for this in this year. Just a reminder on this one, so the prior administration had agreed to explore municipal advertising. In other words, being able to advertise on potentially either, you know, city buildings, or vehicles, or inserts and water bills, you know, ads on TVs that are around City Hall or other buildings. The current administration has not yet agreed to sign up for that, but they are willing to explore it. So we have a request for information out, currently procurement does. We're trying to get information from vendors. We do think there is an opportunity to monetize, you know, some of the, some of the assets that the city has, but I, I know there's some sensitivity about, you know, advertising on certain buildings or certain things. So the administration has agreed to explore it, but we have, don't have a final decision on what and if and when that will happen. So we're, we're assuming that that will all be, we won't get anything from that revenue source through the end of fiscal twenty. On traffic cameras, we're showing a deficit of one point three million dollars versus the budget in fiscal twenty. If you remember, we kept the budget flat from nineteen to twenty. So we budgeted about twenty-one million dollars in both fiscal nineteen and twenty. We received twenty-six million at the end of fiscal nineteen. And if you remember the closeout hearing, we're, we feel pretty strongly that that was the peak. The fiscal nineteen is the most revenue we're gonna get out of that program because we have started to see, as we've said over many periods, a decline and better driver behavior. DOT is now starting to announce new locations. They're actually refreshing locations, so they're moving some of the cameras now that we've gotten to the full complement of a hundred and a hundred, a hundred speed and a hundred red light cameras. They're starting to move them. We don't have a decision yet about adding more cameras. It is under consideration. At this point, they're just moving locations to keep them fresh and to keep drivers on their toes at new locations.
Can I, yes, sir. When you say it's under consideration, is that a decision we can make or is that on the state level?
We can, we, we can add, the city can make the decision to add cameras. This wouldn't be a change in restrictions. It would just be putting additional ones up at new locations. The issue we see is when you get to a certain point, if the location doesn't have enough volume, sometimes the, the, the revenue is not worth the squeeze because of the, the fixed costs, so. It's something we will look at. And then, next item, so parking revenues. Parking revenues, we've continued to see declines in this source. This is parking tax, this is garage income, this is parking meters, this is parking fines. Based on our discussions with the parking authority, we've talked before about, there was some one-time construction activity happening in the Harbor East, Harbor Point area. That has mostly passed. So we feel pretty certain at this point that this is just a, you know, systemic change in just the way people go about moving around from place to place. More people are taking Uber and Lyft, more people are using alternative forms of transportation. We do, we do have a couple of things that we're doing to try to, to try to prevent this from dropping further. As you know, we've, we've proposed, the administration's proposed Taxi Tax Bill to expand it to Uber and Lyft. And we also have worked with DOT. We're, we're, we're in the process of adding a handful of traffic enforcement officers because as we've gone through and looked at the TO schedule, the Traffic Enforcement Officer Schedule, they spend a lot of their time either in the morning rush hour or the evening rush hour, totally dedicated to just traffic enforcement, which, which means there's parts of the city that we're finding that just don't have any enforcement on the parking side. So we've been working with DOT. We think that that's going to be a net revenue gain for the city, that if we start enforcing in some of those areas, especially on residential permit parking, that that will be a benefit for the city. So DOT, we don't have those folks, I think, on the street yet, but they're getting close. And January is when it's expected. The, the next item, Transfer and Recordation Tax. We're, we're showing a deficit of three point four million dollars versus the adopted budget. And this one is, is concerning frankly. So we have, the total number of transactions for the year is higher, but we are seeing a significant decline in the number of multimillion dollar transactions. We're, we're not a hundred percent sure why that is. What we, one theory we have is that frankly, just the refinancing market has dried up. I mean, interest rates have been so low for so long that there were just not seeing as many of those refinancing transactions that require the person to pay the recordation tax. But there also just looks like there are fewer high-dollar value transactions so far this year. So it's something that we, I think it's a trend now. It's been over the first, over calendar year two thousand and nineteen, eleven months out of twelve, we've seen consistently that we have less than the prior year. So we're working with BDC and Housing just to figure out if there's anything else going on the market that we should be aware of. But this is, it looks like this will, will, if the trends continue, this will definitely be the first year that we'll be well below that ninety million dollar threshold that we've hit for four straight years now. And then the final item is tax credits. So on the tax credits, what's happening here is on the, the High Performance Market Rate Tax Credit, we have two projects that are new that are, that we don't know what the amount of the credit is, will be until they get an occupancy permit and they get assessed. So we're seeing the cost is higher than what we expected at, at the time of the budget. And there are two new projects in the pipeline that we expect to hit this year as well. So that's the main driver for that line item. So that's the revenues. I can pause on revenues before we go.
Bob, how come, what are the two projects, the two new projects?
On the, on the High Performance? We can, we can send you, there's two that are being assessed and two in the pipeline. We can send you the address.
How come, why would the two in the pipeline go against revenue? Wasn't there always an expectation that they would be eligible for the High Performance?
So, yeah, we, we build our forecast based on the applications that we have, so it's really a timing issue of if we get new applications and we think they'll be ready in time, then we have to count on a cost to the credit in this fiscal year, so.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it could, it's a timing calculation. The project came to ground or have the occupancy permit in the middle of the year, so we have, we have to account for half the year. That's reality, but when we put the budget together, we don't know when that's gonna happen.
So then, these must be conversions and not new construction, correct?
Either one. Even if it's new construction, the credit, the property is gonna be reassessed at a different value that we don't know.
But if it's a new construction, the property wouldn't be worth nearly as much as if it had vertical, right?
Not necessarily. I mean, if, if, would you say it's new construction?
He said new construction.
The new construction, the base.
Oh, Pedro, Pedro, you grab the mic or just grab a seat up here? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Want to just steal Bob's seat? Yeah, that's fine.
So your question is new construction. The value is, pre-assessment is relatively low. So whatever the new, the new value is gonna, once the SEAT complete the, the assessment, we have to see where the timing for that new reassessment comes on, on, on paper. And that value, that difference, that was gonna be subject to the, to the tax credit. So the question, if it's new construction, the differential, the delta is higher. If it's our conversion, probably lower. But remember that we are looking for a material investment that happened for, in order to be eligible for the tax credit. Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, no, I, I think that the chairman's asking is, relates to, I mean, this shows a deficit, but if we were anticipating, one, if we were anticipating the project, and I kind of heard your, your explanation as far as anticipating the impact that this, those particular projects would have on the budget, I, I really wasn't understanding the timing of how that related to how it worked into the budget. But then, I guess the second question was, as it relates to new construction as opposed to a conversion, I would imagine that new constructions always gonna be, after, after the construction, gonna be valued higher than what the, what the property was prior to the, to the new construction.
Can I take a, just, explain, so, you know, for the, for the purposes of the budget, when we're building the fiscal twenty budget, it generally wraps up by around, I mean, the preliminary budget comes out in March and doesn't change too much. So we do our, we know what has applied, and we look at the assessed value at that point in time. So then when we get into the year, if one of those projects gets assessed for much higher than the cost of the credit, now, we also get the property tax revenue, but the cost of the credit in the first year is eighty percent, so we have a much higher cost. There also are occasionally new projects that come in that might, we not, might not have been aware of, that come in during the middle of the year that we have to count on paying some of that credit during the year. So there occasionally are new ones that come.
And so you anticipate, or you anticipate the possibility of those projects coming in?
Yes, we do, but we don't know what the value is gonna be and when exactly it's gonna hit the, the taxable base. So it could be at the beginning of the fiscal year. If it's at the beginning of the fiscal year, we got, we got full, full year of taxes. If it's half of the year, it's also half year of taxes. But the, the driving part for the, the deficit is how much money it was assessed. And it's definitely higher than what we anticipated. We have some information about the cost that is put into the, the project through the application process, but we don't know the actual value it's gonna be. That's after occupancy permit is done and SEAT comes with what the assessment value is. And we were, because we were looking at a prior project's assessment, like average assessment, this value is definitely lower. The values were, what we estimated for the budget was definitely lower than what we, these projects are, are costing now.
So do you ever report back to us, like, when you have to make adjustments based upon when you get the real assessments and get to find out what the real value is?
You want a report on that?
I mean, I think it would be beneficial.
What I can give you is, I can show you how my calculation was based, prior budget, at the budget cycle, and how these assessments are coming. And, you know, there's not that many projects, but definitely something that you can point out.
And if I could ask for, for one other thing, and, and I'm not saying that this is the intent, but, but when I, when I look at this, my, my initial reaction is, well, tax credits must be bad. Because it, it looks like, you know, a tax credit is a drain, just hear me out. It's kind of, is a drain on, on the city's resources. And so what this might not reflect, and it's not intended to, is, you know, what are the, whether, what are the ancillary benefits? What are the other revenues that are generated as a result of this credit that might not have happened or been, or the city might, might not have availed itself to if not for the credit? And so I, I, I think that for us to have a, a more comprehensive view of, you know, how this budget works and, and how the revenues work, I think we need that additional information so that it gives us more information about, okay, what are the appropriate credits, tax credits that we should be looking at? What, what's not a good credit? You know, you know, what, what is the proper amount of credit? And so I, I think I need to see a fuller picture.
Okay, yeah, and I would, I would say definitely this doesn't, this doesn't necessarily in our mind say that it's bad.
I know, but I think that.
It's more expensive than what we expected for this year's particular budget.
But I think for somebody who maybe not, not understanding the intricacies of credits and how they work, and, and I, I think when you look at this, it, to, it just, the initial reaction is, wow, why would we keep doing this?
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can show what we forecasted this year, just to kind of give some clarity to it. It is a, it's, it's one of the areas that it's harder to forecast because the projects are fluid. So I think we can, we can take that as a follow-up for sure.
Thanks. I've been joined by Councilman Z. Cohen, First District.
Thank you.
Can I ask one more? And I know this isn't related directly to revenues, but can you speak a little bit about what we anticipate from the Tourism Investment District? Do you know anything related to that?
You're talking about the one, the Visit Baltimore had put into place? I think they told us about four, four to five.
How's that working?
So there's, there's an assessment that goes on every hotel tax that will go right back to Visit Baltimore. That had passed the board, the hotels had agreed to it, and.
So the current situation is that, two months after the legislation passed or the board estimate approved, the, in counting the votes for the creation of the district, we, they are, we are ready to impose the additional tax that's gonna be going to them. And that's two percent on the top of nine point five that we charge for hotels. And the first month is actually December, so they will start receiving money in January. And that's, you know, this is a procedure that we get the money and periodically we have to send that money back to them.
And that doesn't, that doesn't show up here because that all goes.
And that's not.
But I think, I think we should still keep it, because those are resources that, that still will be going to enhance, you know, our tourism and, and our ability to attract.
I would say that it's probably a year or more in order to see the impact because that's money that needs to be invested somehow in order to get that return and see occupancy getting higher.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll, I want to touch on a couple of areas on the, on the agency side. So I want to talk about agencies where we're projecting deficits, agencies with surpluses, then just a couple of other citywide issues. So on the deficit side, first want to talk about police. Police is, is actually doing, has improved. We're seeing a significant improvement. So what has happened here? We're projecting, even with the improvement they've made, we're projecting a net two million dollar deficit on salaries, overtime, and a two million dollar deficit on non-personnel spending. And let me just explain what's going on there. So in the fiscal twenty budget, we had counted on a five million dollar savings from both the new patrol schedule and better management. And what we saw is that in the first six pay periods of the year, before they put the new accountability measures in place, they were still spending about one point nine or two million dollars per pay period. As I think some of you have seen at the, at the budget oversight hearings with police, once they put those accountability measures in place, we've seen, you know, pretty significant improvement. So since the time they've put that into place, they've been consistently hitting one point three million per pay period. Our target for them was one point six for the entire year. What we did, just to be conservative, is we said, okay, let's, let's assume one point six million dollars of spending per pay period through the rest of the year, and that's how we came up with a small deficit in overtime. But if they can get, can stick with the one point three to one point four million, I think they'll come on, on target for overtime. We want to be a little bit cautious because, you know, there are, you know, times when we have issues where we need to send more officers on the street for certain, you know, you know, crime-related issues or violence issues. But I can, I think we can definitely say at this point that the accountability they put in place is helping, and they've wiped out a lot of the unnecessary overtime. On the, on the non-personnel side, the one item that has jumped out to us is that they're spending on vehicles, both city vehicles and rental of outside vehicles is, is higher than budget. And the city stat team is, is looking into that with police. Police agrees it's an issue. Our instinct is that they just don't have a good handle on how many vehicles they have, and they might be renting outside vehicles when they have, you know, assets that the city has available to them. So we're looking into that. It is an item that the, the spending is projected higher than budget, but it is, they are attacking it and looking at it as we speak. On the fire side, they're projecting a deficit of five point five million. And not, not much change from last year. We're showing a little, a little bit better on overtime. We're showing a net two point three million dollar deficit on salaries and overtime and three point two million dollar for non-personnel. So on the salaries and overtime side, they still have a high vacancy rate on EMS. You can see eight point eight percent of their positions are unfilled. They're close to full staffing on the suppression side. We, we have encouraged them, and they have taken our advice on more actively recruiting for those terminal vacancies. If you remember, they have people that can take leave at the end of their career, and they were waiting until the person was fully off the payroll and actually retired to recruit for those. Based on some work Daniel has done with them, they are recruiting more actively for those positions and double filling if they have to, to get somebody kind of through the academy and into a seat as soon as they can. We are heading into fire negotiations too in the next calendar year, so I can't say yet what our strategy be, and I can't, you know, it's too, too premature to say what we'll, what we'll be looking at, but definitely they're receiving things on the table in terms of restrictions in the contract, you know, scheduling issues, things that we think will help on overtime. But that won't be wrapped up, we think, until well into calendar year two thousand and twenty. On the maintenance of facilities and vehicles, our, our instinct is that we still have too many buildings. I know that they are in progress. This is something that came up in the budget hearings last year. They're doing that facility study. We haven't seen the results of that yet, but they're at least getting the conditions of their facilities. I mean, our instinct is that we could probably, once we see that study, we should be able to consolidate some buildings without sacrificing service. Fires complain is, we have all these buildings, we can't maintain them, but our pushback is, maybe we can do better. Maybe we don't need to have as many buildings. Maybe we can do okay with fewer and fewer locations so we can target our dollars. So we're still getting a lot of these requests for maintenance of, of building issues and fire, and that's a big issue.
On the, on the. Let's ask one quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Do we, do we have any analysis that shows if the vacancy rate for the EMS was closer to that of the suppression, what kind of savings would we, would we experience?
We, we, we can provide something to you to kind of show if we were at the same rate, if we were fully staffed, how much.
Because I know that last year, we, we did a lot of conversation with the Fire Department about the need to, to, you know, deal with the overtime that's related to EMS.
Yeah.
And it, it doesn't look like there's been much movement in that.
There hasn't. We can, we can do a follow-up and just do a rough calculation if we were to get there. We'll take that as a follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
On the, a couple of agencies that are in surplus, so first, Debt Service, we're projecting seven point one million dollar surplus in that line item. You know, we generally are very conservative here because it's based on the timing of the debt service payment. So we budget for full year of any TIF projects that are expected to get started during that year. And this year, you know, the Port Covington has started. We haven't borrowed yet, is what Treasury has reported, but we've, we account for a full year of debt service payments just in case we borrow early in the year. And we do the same thing on the GO bond side. So we generally see big surpluses there because we're conservative on our, on our projection. In both transportation and health, we're seeing, both agencies have a very large number of vacancies. So transportation has a hundred and forty-three vacant slots out of nine hundred and twenty-four total positions, and health has twenty-seven vacancies out of a hundred and ninety general fund positions. You know, both of those agencies have reported that, you know, they have new leadership and they have lost some folks. So some of those are high-level vacancies that come with the change of leadership. So they're actively looking at recruiting for those positions. But those numbers, those are savings. It's not alarming. We don't think anything's wrong there. We think some of it's just a natural transition for either leadership positions or hard-to-fill positions.
But if I can ask a quick question, and I, I don't know if we even do this level of analysis or if there's a metrics for it, does, is there something that shows how these vacancies impact service to, both in transportation? Because, I mean, do we want to save five million dollars? Absolutely. But if that means that something's not happening in the community. Take, for example, you know, I know a lot of us get issues, calls as it relates to traffic calming. And if there are individuals who are supposed to be in transportation and that are responsible for doing that work, but they're not there, how is this impacting, you know, constituents to not have, you know, have these number of vacancies, both in transportation and health?
Yeah, it does. We definitely don't want that level of vacancy. We definitely encourage them to fill them, and in some cases, it's actually worse because they're using overtime to fill that. So we def, there's definitely no holdup in terms of filling those positions. It does have an impact on service in some ways, and it has an impact sometimes financially because we have to use overtime to fill it. There, the one that we'll show you on the next slide, one of the, so in terms of citywide issues, one of the hard-to-fill positions is, we found is the driver positions. And that was actually a topic that came up in our ASME contract. So just a couple of issues that are hitting agencies as a whole. The budget included two percent coal is for all of our unions, not all of our unions, but for MAPS, ASME, and Cub. Police had already signed, had a contract signed through this year that included a three percent raise in exchange for the schedule and some of those other items. What ended up happening was, the administration agreed to sign the contract with MAPS for a two point five percent raise instead of two. That's a cost of about seven hundred thousand in the general fund. And then on ASME, they agreed to a three percent raise versus a two percent budget, and some pay adjustments for drivers and, and laborers, some positions that are hard to fill. So to answer your question, if there, if there's something where we're having really difficult time recruiting and we think it is a pay issue, sometimes those things will be worked into the union negotiations. I mean, we can't, you know, we're not competitive with some of the other counties. That just kind of is what it is. But if there's something that's really causing an issue on service, we try to consider it.
Okay.
The negotiations. The Cub, which is more of the office work type positions, those negotiations are still in progress at this point. And then I just wanted to highlight in closing too, that the ERP project has begun for the city. We budgeted six million dollars in fiscal twenty. It's something we're keeping our eye on because generally, you know, big projects like that, there's a, you know, potential for cost overruns. So we're keeping our eye on it. It's just underway. We have a contract with Workday to work on the first phase. So I just wanted to mention that. That's something we'll probably come back to, not only this fiscal. That's something we'll probably come back to, not only this fiscal year, but next fiscal year in terms of funding and project status. It's a little bit too early to say if anything's going wrong, but it's something we should be aware of looking forward. And so that is, that is the expenditure side and that is it for that piece. I'm happy to take any questions from the committee.
Colleagues, any questions?
Yeah, a question.
Councilman McCray?
You said that you was working with, when you were in talks with DOT about the parking revenues, trying to go to different areas. How are you guys gonna decide what neighborhoods that you may want to target? I know you said something about the residential ones with the residential signs, but how are you gonna make that decision?
Yeah, so we're, we're gonna work with DOT and, and Parking Authority and get their instinct because they're closer to it. Generally what we found is that, like I said, the TOs, because they have certain times that they're tied up with track of traffic enforcement, there are parts of the city that seem to get very little or no enforcement. We can talk to DOT and just get a sense of where they plan to put those folks and we can reach out to, you know, council members if it will affect their district. But they said that they wanted to focus on areas that they don't get as much enforcement and some of the residential permit areas where they don't get as much consistent enforcement. So we'll, we'll reach out to them and give a, we can, we can provide a little bit more detail.
Does you guys have a timeline on when you were gonna...
I think Jan, is it January?
So they have a priority list of neighborhoods that they would like to get onto a regular schedule of enforcement. I don't have that list offhand. The, the, it takes about, I think, two months for them to be fully trained and be able to actually issue citations. So the first time that they will be hitting the street is sometime in mid-January.
We can get, I think, we'll follow with DOT and get a list of where they plan to target those folks.
Okay, that was my, that was my request, just that priority list.
Yeah.
Okay, we're in recess for the first part.
Thank you.
Now you're for Council Resolution seventeen dash zero 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 four R.